Good evening councillors, good evening members of the public. I'm Jason Brock, Chair of the Policy Committee, Leader of the Council, and I want to welcome you all to the Policy Committee this evening, which is again being held as an online meeting. I'll start as usual by asking members of the committee to introduce themselves for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that everybody is in attendance as expected and can hear and speak to the meeting. So if I could ask members to put their camera on now so that you're ready to appear on screen and introduce yourself. So as I've already said, I'm Jason Brock, Chair of the Committee, Leader of the Council, and I'll go through the other members of the committee alphabetically, starting with councillor Barnett Ward.
Good evening, Adele Barnett Ward, Lead Member for Neighbourhoods and Communities.
Councillor Devine.
Good evening, Ricky Devine, Lib Dem councillor for Tynehurst Ward.
Councillor Emberson.
Good evening, councillor Ellie Emberson, Lead Member for Corporate and Consumer Services.
Councillor Ennis. Well, we'll come back. Councillor Hoskin.
Hi, I'm Graham Hoskin, I'm Lead Councillor for Health, Wellbeing and Sport.
Councillor Jones.
Good evening Chair, I'm Tony Jones, Lead Member for Adult Social Care.
Councillor Page.
Evening councillor Tony Page, Deputy Leader and Lead Member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport.
Councillor Pearce.
Good evening Chair, councillor Ashley Pearce, the Lead Member for Education.
Councillor Robinson.
Good evening Chair, good evening everyone. I'm councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Councillor Rowland.
Good evening Chair, my name's Karen Rowland. I am an Abbey Ward councillor and also the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation. Thank you.
Councillor Skeets.
Good evening Chair, councillor Janet Skeets, councillor for Thames Ward and Leader of the Conservative Group.
Councillor Stamford Beale.
Good evening Chair, councillor Stamford Beale, Peppard Ward councillor.
Councillor Stevens.
Good evening, David Stevens, Thames Ward councillor.
Councillor Terry.
Good evening, Liz Terry, Lead Member for Children's Services.
And councillor White.
Good evening Chair, councillor Rob White, Parkward councillor and Leader of the Green Group of Councillors.
Thank you everyone. I should go back to councillor Ennis to see if he's here. Councillor Ennis, are you here?
I'm here, yeah councillor John Ennis, Lead Councillor Housing, apologies for lateness.
Excellent, thank you. So as at the last meeting, I'll try to avoid roll call votes where possible, but any member is welcome to ask for one if they desire. Usually I will take a vote by verbal acclamation if it's clear that there's one side or the other is going to win. And if there's any contest around this, we'll hold a full roll call vote. So just stick your hand up if you need to. So on to item two, declarations of interest. I haven't received any in advance. Actually, I tell a lie, I think councillor Ennis declared one to me in advance. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, I wanted to declare an interest in the Brighter Futures as I am Chair of the Reading Youth offending service.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Any other declarations of interest from members? Okay, then we'll move on to the minutes of the previous meeting on pages three to 14 of the pack. Any comment on these or can I accept them as a correct record?
Agreed.
Agreed.
So thank you everyone, I will sign those in due course. Item four petitions and questions, we have received no petitions and no questions over from the public or councillors this evening. So that progresses us on to item five, the Quarter Three Performance and Monitoring Report. And do I have Peter Robinson here to present?
I'm here.
Excellent, in your own time.
Thank you. Okay, so this is our performance against quarter three up to the end of December. It's a big improvement on quarter two that we reported at the Policy Committee in December. We were reporting then a projected overspend of 0.6 million. We're now projecting a 4.8 million underspend and there's nothing to suggest that will change significantly through the rest of the financial year. The biggest change in that position is due to increasing government grants, a 4.6 million in total. We did refer to an additional grant that we knew about in that December policy report, a 3.6 million. But we were nervous at that stage about saying we were going to benefit from all of that because we were nervous about potential more costs of Covid. Those haven't transpired. So we're projecting at the moment a 4.8 million underspend on the general fund budget. And also the housing revenue account is also forecast to underspend by just over £5 million as well. The General Fund Capital Programme, unless it excludes the budget for commercial property, which we took out at the last meeting in December of 18 million spend. We've got an underspend of the best part of 40 million. That's due really in terms of delays due to Covid. A multitude of items, including the ledger schemes that have been delayed, that set out in one of our appendices to the report. Also, the HRA capital programme is also delayed and will underspend by about 18 million. Both of those item areas will catch up, we're hoping, in the next financial year. The next item of note is we're drawing down another 9.9 million of reserves as direct revenue funding to finance capital. That's in the main because we've struggled to achieve capital receipts we'd planned to in the year that we would set aside against capital. If we hadn't drawn down from this reserve, which was set aside for this purpose, it would mean we'd have increased minimum revenue provision charges going forward. So it's a prudent way of managing our budgets going forward. But what it does mean is our reserves will reduce. And that brings me to the last point, is the recommendation which we put through in the budget that was approved in February, was that the projected 4.8 million underspend for this year would be added to earmarked reserves to top back up this direct revenue funding of capital and also to fund the use of reserves to balance the revenue budget. So overall, there's not massive changes from the previous quarter in revenue terms. Probably the biggest change is within corporate resources, which showing a £1 million improvement, which is made up of a couple of areas, including in court fees, in the finance team and an underspending IT, well, a reduction in the overspending IT. The report then sets out in quite a lot of detail movements, invariances, but nothing significant in comparison to the other things I've mentioned and I've referred to capital. The report then, towards the end, talks about savings delivery. Now savings have slipped in the current financial year due to Covid. The risk is not necessarily in this year, it's for future years, where a lot of these savings will need to be carried forward and delivered on top of the savings that we've already approved in the budget. So we'll need to be cautious and monitor closely our revenue position next year when we won't have the benefit of the Covid grants from government. The report goes on to talk about performance through the appendices. I'm more than happy to take any questions from members.
Thank you Assistant Director. I had indication prior to the meeting from councillor Emberson and I have had an indication just now from councillor Stevens as well. So I'll go to councillor Emberson first.
Thank you Chair, I don't have much to add and I think the Assistant Director of Finance has outlined the report in full and clearly I welcome the improved position we are in compared to when we last reported in December. But of course, we're still in quite unprecedented times as members will know when we discuss the budget at council. So clearly, there's still a lot of work to be done and those savings is something we're going to have to consider every time we have a quarterly report. And I support the recommended actions within the report and I think it is a prudent approach, as Mr Robinson has just said, in terms of making sure that we can top up our reserves and given the underspend forecasted, I think it's appropriate to do so. But I have nothing further else to add Chair.
Thank you councillor Emberson. Councillor Stevens.
Just a question about the government grants, which I know I appreciate it's been horrendously difficult to project income expenditure this last year. But obviously, we've had significant grants, just over 20 million, and we come with about a 4 million underspend, I appreciate it's against budget. Is there any danger that central government might decide or could try and claw back some of that because we've underspent against budget?
No, they're general grants and in fact, quite a few authorities have underspent their budget due to some of these grants coming forward. So we've quite lucky that actually it's covered all of our expenditure due to Covid and all our savings slippage this year. So some labour and authorities, that's been a similar case if you look across the board. As I've outlined, the bigger risk is in future years where actually there will be an ongoing impact of Covid, but not necessarily that support from government beyond the grant they've already promised so far. I mean, what does give us comfort is that they're going to continue giving support to business, which shores up some of our main income sources. But our big issue is future projections beyond 21-22 in terms of future funding and income. So looking at the Chancellor's budget, clearly there needs to be a cut in services in terms of, or sort of, public funding going forward. And that's the big uncertainty going forward for us really. But in comparison to other authorities, I'd say Reading was in a fairly strong position.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no other indications from colleagues. So I propose then that we move to the vote on the recommended action, not hearing any dissent from the recommended action. So can we proceed with that?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Excellent, I'll take that as carried. Thank you all and thank you to the Assistant Director. Takes us on then to item six, which is Brighter Futures for Children's Governance and Reserve Matters. And I have Kate Gray for the Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts to introduce.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, so as stated, this report comes to Policy Committee in its role as shareholder and sole member for Brighter Futures for Children and is concerned with governance and reserved matters around the leadership of the company. So members may recall in September, there was a report that was brought forward due to the departure of the Managing Director. In December, there was interim arrangements that were agreed with extended duties for the Chair of the company to take on the role of Executive Chair. And there was an appointment which had already been in place for an interim Executive Director of Finance and Resources. And the report set out a request for grant to waiver of the requirements in the articles to allow said Executive Director to operate in the same role as an employee of the company on the board, to allow the company to continue business. Since that report in September, Brighter Futures have conducted a review of the leadership structure that they wish to have in place on an ongoing basis. So they wanted to take the opportunity rather than re-recruit to the Managing Director post to review their requirements. And effectively, the outcome of said review is they are not looking to recruit replacement to the Managing Director post for the company. They have not yet had the ability to be able to appoint permanently to the Executive Director of Finance and Resources, which is something that they plan to do later on through this calendar year. And so as such, the paper is requesting the continuation of the amended role of the Executive Chair and to extend the interim Executive Director appointment and the relative waiver so that the company can continue with business. Also, in addition to that, there has been a skills review completed of the non-executive directors for Brighter Futures. It has been proposed by the company that they would like to extend and reappoint, sorry, the current non-executive directors, being Tony Byrne, Nicola Gilham and Paul Snell, when their current term expires in November this year. They would like to recruit an additional non-executive director. They feel that there would be benefit in bringing additional skills around both commissioning and/or education and also are looking for an appointment that would mean that should all of the current non-executive directors decide to cease at the end of their second term, there is an element of stability and continuation for the company. Any questions please?
Thank you Assistant Director, helpful introduction. I'm glad that the company have had an opportunity to look at their structure and I'm supportive of what they've brought forward here, including some pragmatic decisions for the immediate term. Councillor White.
Thank you Chair, I will be voting for the recommended action. However, as we've said before, as Green Councillors have said before, we are concerned about the use of expensive agency managers at Brighter Futures for long periods of time. It's good to hear that there are plans afoot to get some more permanent staff into those roles, but I would urge for it to happen as soon as possible. We do want to see more permanent staff because that will be less agency staff at great expense and ultimately more money that can be spent on behalf of Reading's children. Thank you.
I don't see any other indications to speak. Assistant Director, anything you wanted to come back on?
I don't think there's anything to come back extensively on that. I think that Brighter Futures share the desire to move away from interim and agency staff in the main, across the board. One of the reasons for retention of the current Executive Director has actually been around elements of stability of the overall management of the company, which I'm advised has been a key component in them coming out of intervention, for which I'm sure we would all be grateful. So just to note.
Thank you kindly. Right, so haven't detected any dissent from the recommended action, so are we okay to agree that then?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you colleagues. And that is passed as printed. Moving us on then to agenda item seven, the Brighter Futures for Children 21 to 22 Business Plan. So I'll go to Kate Gray for again to introduce and then I'll bring in Deborah Glassbrook, our Director of Children's Services, for any comments that she might have. But over to the Assistant Director first of all then.
Thank you Chair. So as is laid out in this report, Brighter Futures for Children as a wholly owned company of Reading Borough Council will have to receive two reports through the year as shareholder and sole member. One is around a performance report from the company and the second one is a business plan, this being the business plan. This also provides further detail, really alongside the figures that have already been approved through the council budget, which included the contract sum that is contained within the Brighter Futures Business Plan. So that aligns with the budget that was obviously passed through Policy Committee and council previously through February. So just to note, in terms of this particular business plan, it's the second full year business plan. Members will obviously note the fact that we previously had the improvement from Brighter Futures through the Ofsted inspection and the rating increasing from inadequate to requires improvement to be good. This has now been built on last month through coming out of intervention, which I'm sure Deborah Glassbrook will cover later on. The business plan has got revised priorities and incorporates a revised transformation programme. The transformation programme has been refocused. A number of the areas that were in the previous transformation programme were required to move towards the coming out of intervention. Some of those have since completed and the revised focus is looking at the continued improvement of the company and also to contribute to the medium term financial plan savings that have been provided for within the budget. The report sets out the fact that as per the budget, the council MTFS has provision for 1.5 million towards the transformation activities across the company. And the report also further highlights a couple of the other key aims that come out from the report, one being the provision within the capital programme for send places through school investment. Workforce planning, we've just touched on in the previous item and again, I'm sure Deborah will have the opportunity to cover. But very much a focus of the company is continued workforce stability. So the positives, not only from a cost perspective, but actually from continuity of casework, from a social work perspective. However, I think it would be worth noting that actually as we come out of Covid, the company has managed to hold with its finances and generally, despite comments that have come out across the country from the Children's Commissioner about concern about Covid hiding abuse, there has been proactive way of the company seeking to manage this through their risk approach to contacts through the Covid pandemic, seeking to increase such contacts to minimise any Covid impact. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you Assistant Director. If I go over to the Director of Children's Services then, Deborah Glassbrook.
Yes, good evening Chair and thank you very much for this opportunity. We're delighted to be able to bring this second full year business plan before you this evening and of course, delighted to be able to share the fact that we have come out of DFE statutory intervention on the 8th of February. What is particularly noteworthy of that is that the Children's Commissioner, who we had identified from the DFE, who's been working with us for the last few years, noted only this very afternoon when we had our virtual roadshow with all of our staff, just how extraordinary it is to have moved out of intervention in just one inspection turnaround, that is within the three years, and a very early move from inadequate to requires improvement to be good and then a very early move out of intervention. It's quite unusual to come out of intervention in 15 months and certainly during a period of Covid. So I just wanted to note that and my thanks to all of our partners and all of our colleagues in the council for the extraordinary partnership work that that has entailed and, you know, borne fruit in us being able to achieve that in the timeframe. Again, just want to note, as you will see from the six priorities, we are really focusing on making sure that we are delivering transformational services for the children, young people in Reading going forward, thinking very much about the resources that we're going to use, thinking about the demand management and the end process mapping. We're very excited about the idea of identifying children in Reading and their families who need support at a much earlier point and we have our Early Help project in place and we're strengthening that and we're very grateful for the ongoing support financially and otherwise of the council and partners in achieving that. We know that education is going to be a real challenge for a lot of our children, having gone back today and during the next week. A number of our children, of course, not totally returned yet, but we're anticipating all of our children being able to go back to school in the next week. We're very mindful of the mental health impact that Covid is going to have and the support that our schools are going to need going forward. And we're also very mindful of the impact that Covid's had on our early years providers as well. So we're going to continue to focus on the learning opportunities and school readiness for the smaller people of Reading. In terms of stable workforce, this has been a focus that we've had all the way through. And I cannot report this evening and just to provide some assurances to councillor White, that there has been a significant reduction in the number of agency staff that we've had. In November, we had 72 across the company. That has reduced to 47 in February and we've got a significant reduction in the social workforce of agency, reducing from 39 in November to 21 in February. So just to demonstrate the absolute focus on that, but also I think the increased confidence that our staff have on us because we are increasing the senior leadership stability. And it's really good to note that having had our annual engagement meeting with Ofsted this week, all four of us who were in that meeting, as myself, as the Director of Children's Services and the three directors that work with me, Director of Social Care, the Director of Intervention, sorry, Early Help and Intervention and a Director of Education, we're all very stable. We're also stable at the service manager level and the majority of our team managers. So we are really very pleased about the progress but will continue to focus on is to ensure that we've got a stable workforce going forward. We are aware of some of the challenges and the challenges going forward are going to be about the impact of Covid and certainly thinking about the sufficiency of placements, making sure that all of our children that can be are placed locally to Reading. We're again very pleased to be able to note that we've made great progress in that with a reduction of from 58% to 32% of our children living outside of Reading. And as I say, that's going to be a key focus going forward. So we feel we're on a very positive place. We're on track to achieve much more. We are on our way to our aspiration of getting to good and aspiring to outstanding over these next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you Director. And just to put on record again, our gratitude as councillors, I think collectively, for the work that has gone in and congratulations on getting out of intervention so quickly. I think it's really very impressive, as indeed the Commissioner has noted, and we're very pleased and hope that it unlocks opportunities in the future to continue moving forward. Very pleasing especially to hear increased staff confidence around the organisation as well. So I had prior indications from councillor Pearce and councillor Terry. I've had indications in the meeting from councillor White and councillor Robinson. So I shall go to councillor Pearce first.
Thank you Chair. Like so many other teachers, it was back to school for me today. And I'd like to thank firstly the work and patience of parents during lockdown. I'm sure there were many a relieved household this morning that schools were open. I'll continue to heap praise on the staff, all school staff that have been magnificent adopting to remote learning so quickly from January, from the announcement, over the last few months. And today, getting in secondary schools, the testing off the ground and in primary schools, providing such a welcome environment for our young people to come back to. And lastly, obviously with that, I would like to heap huge praise on our young people and as Deborah Glassbrook mentioned there, there are obviously going to be issues that we will help and attend with. But they have been resourceful, resilient, adaptable, working through lockdown. But obviously, I know they will be looking forward, if they've not gone back today, to going back to school this week. And any catch up that may be needed, we will provide assistance with. But I would like to, you know, give the government a bit of advice that if you just let schools, school leaders and teaching staff deal with the catch up, it will be far more worthwhile and resourceful than any top down policies that seem to be coming. I welcome the plan from Brighter Futures for Children. So much of education is a partnership, partnership between the schools, central government, the local authorities and then within those, parents, governors, the school staff and the pupils. Brighter Futures have certainly played a key role in the last couple of years and obviously... and obviously through the last difficult year via the organisation of our schools. I know there's been lots of positive comments about the communication flows that have improved in the past year, and the advice that we've been offering schools. And these have all been referenced in the business plan, which I'm pleased to see. The plan mentions, and Kate Gray has mentioned, that the capacity increases in our mainstream schools and SEN settings. We progress with the River Academy Secondary School and the Oak Tree SEN School in collaboration with Wokingham, which will increase our capacity, and it will help get young people to the provision that's best for them and closer to home. And I also think it's really important that the wider reputation, which I think is just referenced by councillor Brock, the wider reputation of Brighter Futures for Children in terms of children's services, but I know certainly in education, is improving. And that's improving both within our own locality with all the stakeholders that I mentioned earlier, but also from further afield, from other localities and other schools, seeing that there's in other areas, seeing that there's excellent work going on here. So I think this plan will really help us to improve and build on that further. So I certainly welcome it.
Thank you councillor Pearce, and certainly, you know, very challenging months ahead for the borough's children and indeed for the borough's teachers. I'm sure they'll all conduct themselves incredibly well, but I know it will be difficult. Councillor Terry next.
Thank you, Chair. And along with councillor Pearce, I'd like to thank all the teachers who got back to school today and our children. Over in children's services, we do worry about the impact that Covid has had on our children and young people. But you're absolutely right councillor Pearce. We also know that they've been hugely resilient and coped remarkably well with many of the challenges that certainly have been faced by our children and young people during this time. Clearly, I welcome this plan. I think it's a very strategic plan that consolidates on the progress to date, both in terms of the best possible outcomes for children and young people, and of course, supporting their families and working within a planned budget. So I'd like to thank all the staff. I know there's lots already been said by others, but I think people forget, just like they forgot that schools stayed open, people forget that, you know, social workers and early help workers have continued to visit our children where that needs to happen, but have stayed in touch with them in different ways. And some of them have really liked the online contact that they've had and found that really works really well for them. And that's been a good thing to find out and something that we can use again in the future. Again, as councillor Pearce says, we, Brighter Futures have come a long way, but it doesn't do it on its own. We have our statutory partners like the police and health, who really work hard with us around thinking about our early intervention and prevention, as Deborah Glassbrook was talking about, so that we stop children coming into care. But our wider voluntary and community partners play a key role, and we look forward to working further with them as we look to strengthen our communities as well as our families in terms of protecting and enabling our children to have happy and healthy lives as they go forward. Again, I agree. I talk to colleagues outside of Reading, outside of Barter even, across the South East, and I can report that we have a growing reputation of, you know, as a children's services and an education service and our youth service and all of that in terms of really turned around. And to have done so, to have made so much progress. I mean, the Commissioner has said it, you said it leader, but I think it's worth saying again, to have made so much progress in such a short time and during a global pandemic is truly remarkable. And congratulations to everyone involved, and I recommend this plan to you.
Thank you councillor Terry. On to councillor White.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, I'd like to echo what others have said about the hard work of everyone involved, and yeah, teachers today in particular. It's great that things are moving in the right direction at Brighter Futures. However, Green Councillors are a bit concerned about the lack of transparency that we have found when we've been trying to get information about what's going on within Brighter Futures. There is one proposal in the business plan, and we only received the real detail of the business plan, the breakdown of savings, the day before the budget meeting, which was a bit disappointing as a councillor. We're concerned about this proposal. It's number 14. It's called Analytics to Improve Referral Work Through, and I've made the Chair aware of my concerns. I wasn't proposing, we get into the detail of debating it tonight. What I'd like is to add a further recommended action that ACE or policy, if people prefer, gets progress updates on the implementation of all Brighter Futures savings and the contract key performance indicators. So it's easier for councillors to keep an eye on what's going on and to scrutinise it and to hold people to account and praise people when things are going well. If there is the improved, increased transparency, I'll be supporting the recommended action. If not, I'll be voting against it. I'm happy to put it into the chat, that proposal, which I'll do now.
Thank you councillor White. I've been having a think, and I appreciate you giving me a call earlier about this and entirely agree with the sort of general thrust of what you're seeking to do. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that with the end of DFE intervention, clearly a different relationship, one would hope, will develop between the council and the company without the same kind of intermediary effect that the DFE had. However, I'm also aware that we are still bound by the strictures of the contract that was set up according to the DFE's wishes. And so what I would suggest is, rather than what you have framed there, that instead we send away the Assistant Director for Contracts and Procurement, Procurement and Contracts, and the Monitoring Officer to review the arrangements around financial reporting. And I think it should be to Policy Committee because it is the sole member. It acts as the sole member for Brighter Futures. That we ask the Monitoring Officer and the Assistant Director to go away, review the situation and report back to us on sort of changes that may be possible. But like I say, I'm aware that throughout we are governed by what is laid down in that, in that contract that we have with the company. So I think it's entirely the same spirit as what you've proposed. It's a different form of wording, and a wording that I think allows us to avoid tripping over the constitution or tripping over the contract itself. Does it sound like a reasonable proposition to you councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. That does sound reasonable. I guess my only question is, what timescale would you envisage for us hearing back from those people about a way forward?
Well, I suppose it depends on their workload, but maybe the Assistant Director for Procurement and Contract could give us a bit of an indication when we go back towards the end. But I'm hoping it's something we could move through fairly quickly. But as the Assistant Director said in her introductory comments, within the contract, there is sort of, you know, twice annual reporting at the moment. So something that would make a change to that may be more difficult than it superficially seems. So I think we'll ask her to go away and give a proper time to do it. But let's work out perhaps beyond this meeting what the timescale might be for that separately. And I do agree, the other element of your comments, I think, is about a sort of enhanced role for ACE in terms of the scrutiny of children's services, in terms of service delivery. And I think that's quite right and proper. And again, with the withdrawal of the DFE from our sort of daily lives, as it were, it's important that we ensure that ACE is as strong and robust as possible in fulfilling that role. And so there are conversations to take up, I think, with the Chair of ACE and with the lead members, Lead Member for Children's Services and the Lead Member for Education. And I hope you'll do that independently, just as I will do that as well. And I think, again, having spoken to the Monitoring Officer earlier today, he'll go away and review the arrangements for what goes to ACE and see if there's any strengthening that can be done in that regard. And we may, if necessary, then make constitutional changes in May, but hopefully it won't be necessary and it's something we can do within the setup or the setup of powers that we currently have. So I hope that's all quite clear and straightforward. Is that okay councillor White?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Chair.
Good, thank you. In which case I'll go over to councillor Robinson then.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I'd like to echo what has already been said by councillors Terry, Pearce and councillor White in terms of our great thanks and congratulations to Brighter Futures for Children and all involved in looking after our children in Reading. Because the news of coming out of intervention so soon and the rise in hand rated is so fantastic, you know, given where we were a few years back. I'd also like to thank Brighter Futures for producing the plan, which is a great plan, fantastic objectives, and will hopefully move us, keep us moving forwards in the right direction to improving the services. I did have one comment, if I may, and certainly the team from Brighter Futures might like to come back on this. On page 113 of the plan, which is the human resources element of the business plan, it mentions about leadership and management development and about embedding new company behaviours. And, you know, I certainly welcome the improved employee wellbeing side, but I'm just mindful of the fact that learning and development for the staff, not just for the leadership and management, seems to be lacking in this particular plan or focus on learning and development. What I'm looking at is obviously with learning and development for the teams at Brighter Futures, obviously it's a great help in terms of staff retention, and that is certainly a key focus of the plan as well in terms of not only hiring, recruiting new staff, but obviously retaining staff as well to cut down on the costs of agency staff. So I just wanted an understanding that, you know, learning and development of the staff as well as leadership and management is a priority for Brighter Futures moving forwards. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Got no other indications to speak. So if I go back to officers, but in reverse order, I think. So if I go to the Director of Children's Services first and then to the Assistant Director thereafter. So over to the Director of Children's Services. Anything you wish to respond to, Ms Glassbrook?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair. So thank you for those helpful pointers to councillor Robinson. Absolutely really good point. We are providing ongoing training for all of our staff. And but it's a good point that it's not explicitly included in the plan. I think what we were thinking that we would continue to roll out the programme of support to all of our staff, but particularly wanting to focus on developing a strong, robust, creative and forward-thinking leadership programme. I think we've already done a lot of work on that, and we want to strengthen that explicitly. But certainly the idea of providing ongoing support and training for all of our staff is implicit, but absolutely take that point. Thank you very much. And certainly if there's anything else in terms of anything that is helpful regarding councillor White's proposal, then of course we're very happy to support, and I'll work with Kate, the Assistant Director, and with the Monitoring Officer on those points around the contract and the key performance indicators. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And back to the Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts then.
Thank you, Chair. Just checking, I was actually unmuted, apologies. Yes, so just picking up on the question about coming back around financial reporting, I would need to double check with where we are in the committee cycle. My understanding is that committee, where we are in the committee cycle, the earliest that I'd be able to come back to policy to go through the process in full would be any meeting to be held in May or thereafter. So I'm certainly happy to look to propose to come back at the first opportunity that we can.
Thank you, Assistant Director. I think, I don't believe that I'll have to sit down later this week and go through the next year's municipal calendar in painful detail. I don't think we'll have a policy committee in May, because we don't usually do that. So it'll probably be June.
June, yeah.
It's a useful sense of timetabling, thank you. So if then, let's move to the vote on the recommended action. Adding in a new 2.3, I think it would be, that asks, requests, instructs, whatever the proper wording would be, the Monitoring Officer and the Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts to review financial reporting arrangements of Brighter Futures for Children Limited to Policy Committee in its capacity as sole member, and report back on changes that can be made. I think that covers what we're seeking to do here. So I haven't detected anybody dissenting from this approach, so we'll go for a verbal acclamation. Everybody agreed with the recommended action?
Agreed.
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 Excellent, thank you all. So that moves us on then to item 8, which is moving the motion for the closed session. So I have to move pursuant to section 100a of the Local Government Act 72 as amended, members of the press and public be excluded during consideration of the following items on the agenda, as it is likely that there would be a disclosure of exempt information as defined in the relevant paragraphs of part one of schedule 12a as amended of that act. Members agree with this?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much. That brings us then to the end of our public session. So just wanted to thank members of the public for listening to the meeting. And we'll move over to consider the last two items, items 10 and 11 in the closed session. Thank you very much to the public. And if Committee Services could take us out of the live meeting.